I call to order the Roseville Board of Commissioners work session. This is July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Want to thank everybody's in attendance. Appreciate you coming out tonight, also anybody's watching online, so I'm welcome. We have just a couple items on agenda, and then we'll go into a closed session for personnel. First, the items, the first one is we need to do the consideration agenda, and then affordable housing conversation, and a chamber memorandum of understanding. So those are the three business items that we'll take care of, and the first one's pretty simple, consideration agenda. Do I have any, any discussion on that? Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, not hearing any, ayes have it, thank you. And then the next item is affordable housing conversation. Who's leading that? Eric, are you leading that?
First of all, good at, good evening, Mayor and Board. So the two items that are on the agenda are slated as, having marked as conversations. And so it's essentially, we are a staff, I have, Stephen is here and Michael's here as well, to just have an open dialogue about it. The first one being affordable, affordable housing conversation, just to, for anybody who's watching, the town, we own a property that's behind Town Hall, put out an RFP to request proposals for potential ideas and solutions to help us advance the topic of affordable housing here in the town of Roseville. And we have an affordable housing plan that is in draft right now, and the conversation about affordable housing has been something that's been going on for, over the last, like, two years. But as we've kind of moved forward with the idea and the vision of it, you all have gained more information or insights around veterans and the senior population, what is workforce housing, what the different layouts of communities, how many, all these different things. And in the most recent meeting with Habitat, they came and they made a presentation because they rose to the top from a steering committee that we had with some two residents, some of you sat on that as well, to kind of help move toward what is the idea that will essentially kind of decide on us what we'd like to do. So I wanted to bring, we wanted to bring this back to you as a conversation, because there are conversations and questions that we received as staff from you as far as questions and conversations we have with you as staff on things you would like to see, things you'd like to focus on using through this project that we're working on and developing, co-creating with you all. And so I want to just have an open conversation about that, on where everybody sits on it, different perspectives, so that we can determine what the next steps are and keep traction and momentum on the idea. And so I wanted to just kind of look to each one of you to see if you had anything you wanted to chat about, express, with regards to the direction of it, so that we can just kind of sync up and be of like one mind moving forward on it.
I'll chime in. So just for everyone listening, we did an RFP, we had seven applicants, we narrowed it down, I believe, to three, and we had Habitat for Humanity come in and speak. I've talked to at least one of my fellow commissioners, and it would be nice to be able to bring the other two candidates in to speak as well, because we do have to make a decision, and I think that would probably help us move forward in that direction, so that we can get the information we need, so that we can decide who's going to build on the property behind Town Hall.
Also chime in with, thank you, sir. Also with you, using the guidelines that we already have set, as far as in six percent of AMI, after hearing from Habitat, we know what they look for, but we also want to reflect back to the guidance that we have for seniors, for veterans, for those with disabilities, as well as the workforce. So by hearing from the other developers, I think that would be kind of good as well. And I do appreciate the committee that was put together, and I think you guys sat on that for taking the time to narrow it down to those top three choices. But we heard from one, I would like to hear from the other two.
What about the other commissioners, any discussion? Who served on the committee?
I did.
And who was it on the commissioner?
I think.
Think so.
Me and you.
So we probably know more than the rest of everybody else, but...
So, hearing from someone else, okay. I do have some reservations about the foundation, mostly because when they submitted their information and they had additional information to submit, they did not submit it on time, they did not do what was asked, and Michael had to extend and give them more time to submit. To me, someone that is showing interest to someone is going to be all over it, and not, we don't have to chase them down. So that doesn't sit well with me. And also, because they created the foundation, I know that it, I believe you said that it's a business that's been in business for twenty years, but they created the foundation. The foundation has never done what we've, what we're looking for. And so I also don't feel comfortable with going with someone who I feel didn't put us as a priority, and doesn't have the experience that we're looking for. That's my two cents.
This information that is new to me. Question, what are your thoughts for the second option?
The second option, I think that they, I would like to look back, I need to refresh and see why, once again, I looked at this last week with Michael. We had a brief conversation last week. I need to look back and see what the reservations were, why the reason was that we chose Habitat over the...
True Homes.
Yes, over True Homes. But the information that I just stated, we actually did hear in one of the presentations from Michael before. So that was my reservation. I can take another quick glance back real quick, and I don't have a problem with hearing from them, from the true, from the true foundation, I just, I just don't think that the, no, from True Homes, the foundation, I just don't think that we are a priority with them.
Understood.
And I can't speak to why, what happened, but I do know that they are a seasoned developer, they've developed all over North Carolina, and they do have the experience, they, I mean, they just did the ABC store in Youngsville, and it's a beautiful building.
Right. I don't say that, I don't mean they don't have experience, but they don't have experience in what we're looking for, I don't feel.
And that's, that's your opinion. I, you know, I think it's worth hearing from them, because they are the only ones that offered a senior affordable housing, and I think we can all recognize that we absolutely do need senior affordable housing. It may not be the only thing we need, and that's for us to decide, but I think it's worth hearing from them. And if you continue reservations, that's, you know, that's, you're right, and, you know, it's worth hearing from them.
Oh, Lynnwood, you guys got any thoughts, opinions?
More information's always better, so, I mean, but I, but I don't want, I want to be, if they come, they present, we decide, that's it, then. That needs to be the end of it. Like, we'll just go from there.
I think that's my thoughts, is I feel like we're spinning wheels. And, and I, and I get it, like, we do need senior housing, okay? We also need affordable housing. And so, you know, we continue to kick this proverbial can down the road, we're not getting any progress. And so I'm looking for progress, so if we do this, we need to do this immediately, and let's make a decision, to Paul's point, in the immediate, because, I mean, quite frankly, I think this is an injustice to the team that's taking time to do the evaluations, as I'm looking at the affordable housing RFP that was selected and the orders in which they were selected. Habitat was number one, True was number two, both of the top two is about ownership, everything else is rental. And to me, the ownership piece of it is, is outstanding, that's what we're doing affordable housing for, but at the same rate, I don't want to disrespect the notion that we do need some senior housing, but it just may not be in this particular location. So if we're going to do it, we need to make a decision on when, tonight, in my opinion.
And just to correct, the, the foundation is ownership as well. There was a misunderstanding, I think, that was bandied about, but all the top three are all ownership, as, as far as I understand, and I know the foundation is. So it's an ownership entity and project as well.
And we have that in writing, or did they tell you that?
No, it's in writing.
Okay, was there a updated document beyond the one that was sent out on, what day was that, gosh, May the, March the eighteenth? Have we had an updated document on that? Am I aware?
No.
So that would be something that they need, that we would, I would assume that if we haven't had an update in regards to that being a rental versus ownership, that would be something we need to see in writing, correct? That we could add to this? So, I mean, at the end of the day, we just need to be expedient about our processes, quite frankly.
Anything else, Lynnwood?
No, sir.
Michael, where, come on up, you, you may, you may have something to add or something to say. So where are we at with the process?
The RFP process has kind of been completed. You know, we put out the RFP, the committee reviewed the proposals received, made a selection, and then that was just, you know, the, the purpose of the committee is make a recommendation to the town board, to say, here's what we did, here's what we went through, here's what we learned. And that committee had, you know, somebody from Wake County, the housing authority, a few residents in the Barrington neighborhood. It was similar to the committee that was used for the affordable housing plan, when the plan got scheduled, so.
Yeah. Only, only comment, only comment I would have, this probably sounds a little selfish or bad or something, but anyway, I know, I know several people that want to live in town, they can't live in town, even close people to me that wants to live in town, they don't, can't afford to live here, can't afford to buy here, can't afford to live here at all. And, and if I remember Habitat, it went with sixteen, and if those sixteen goes to someone that's not even in, in town already, you know, I think that was the purpose, that was my purpose anyway, is to provide affordable housing for people here, you know, our family members and friends that can't afford to buy a house in town. If, if we don't accomplish that, then I think, you know, what are we doing? We're giving, we're giving, we're giving up citizens' land, that citizen won't, you know, people that they know to live in, that can go to anywhere, anywhere, if they've been on a list for a long time. So that's the only thing I think I'm struggling with, is, is how do you, how do you reconcile that?
So it, so the houses can go to anyone that lives anywhere, if what, if somebody else comes in and builds those houses, what's...
Well, I can't say, it may be favorable, I'm not saying that's just...
Right, that's what, that's what I'm saying. If somebody else comes and builds here, who's to say that anybody from Roseville is going to live in those houses, and not somebody that wouldn't have been on that list anyway?
That probably could be it, that's probably it. That may be, that may be something that's just, Dave probably knows more legal things about it than I do, but I guess in theory, whoever does it is kind of defeating what I thought the purpose was, is to provide affordable housing for people here that wants to live, that, you know, want to buy a house and want to live here. That's either renting in town, living out in the country that wants to move into town, or either family members, a lot of...
There's no way for us to stipulate that they're the ones that are going to buy those places.
I know, I know.
Again, with any of these, and to be clear, Habitat was sixteen for twenty, Town Homes and True Homes was thirty-eight, and Hurt Foundation was thirty-four. I guess my, my question around that, well, why would we, why was Habitat so many Town Homes less? And I don't know if it came down to the design, but, I mean, that's, I'm assuming that that was the case, is being more specific, but, you know, are we really trying to solve a problem, or are we just trying to solve agendas? I just think we need to solve a problem.
If, if I may interject, so the, the amount, the amount of homes and the layout of the proposed designs and draft site plans, those things can change.
Okay.
Right? And so what we really want to think about is the partnership and the, the who, right? And so the proposal was to see who would be the person we can partner with, the builder we can partner with, to kind of move forward. And so just wanting to be mindful of like kind of all of the aspects, and that some of the things, just for you all to think about, is that some aspects of it will change or evolve depending on what they find on the ground, if they're running the granite, how many, but the most important thing is that we, that you all feel confident in who we partner with, and know that this will be the first of many projects that we do in the area, right? In, in this particular area that focuses on this particular thing. And so I just wanted to add that in, so that we don't kind of overanalyze and kind of keep us stuck, knowing that a lot of different things, like, you know, the car may be blue, it might be red, it might be yellow, you know? And so it might be a minivan, it might be a full-size SUV, right? But keeping in mind of the things that is the most certain right now, is the choosing of the who, and knowing that some of those other things, they, they may change depending on topography, or we can make recommendations to them to increase the capacity of it, and so...
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
If, if that's the case, then why would, it seems like there's a surety in these quotes of thirty-eight, thirty-four, and sixteen to twenty, I just, those are, those are large numbers of disparity to me. You're talking ten to twelve homes from Habitat to True, so what was it that True saw that Habitat didn't? Or is it just strictly the design?
Yeah, it could be design, I know that some of them got feedback on the height of the buildings, and they were saying they wanted to be multiple stories, things like that. And so they, they all received feedback in real time of like, we don't really like that, or really, we really do like that.
Okay.
And so, those are things that will be factors.
Okay.
To the extent it's helpful to the board, I've pulled up the minutes from the March work session, and, and the board did take action at the work session. McFarland sought guidance from the board on whether to pursue communications with Habitat for Humanity or to take a different direction. Board members discussed various aspects of the proposals. Commissioner Dan Alston asked about flexibility in the number of units and AMI levels. Commissioner Michael Paul expressed support for the Hurt Foundation proposal, which focused on senior housing. Commissioner Paul Vilga voiced preference for the cottage-style homes proposed by Habitat. The board generally agreed to direct staff to begin conversations with Habitat for Humanity while also exploring options to increase density and potentially include some units at a fifty to sixty percent AMI. That is where the board took action in March. If the board wants to change the direction, the board should take new action and direct staff to do something different.
So I could move to reach out to the other two candidates and ask them to present, and that would open up a conversation for us to discuss it and decide.
I suppose the board could decide to do anything in this regard. While normally we have, we are bound by the decisions of the past, to the extent there's no motion to reconsider, I'm going to believe that given that it was a work session, and it says generally agreed to direct staff, that there's some flexibility there, but the guidance that the board gives today should be clear again, and the staff should carry it out.
I move that we invite the other two candidates in to present, and then as a board, we make a decision and we move forward on that basis.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion, seconds, any other discussion? Come on, board, if you can, need one to discuss it, if we can. All right, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Okay. Did you get the count?
Just one.
I don't, I didn't hear anything.
Yeah, no, I don't think there's a need.
Three, two, I think is the count, what I count, two. April, Lynnwood in his agreement. Okay, thank you, board, for making a decision. We'll move on. I guess, Dave, you know, my concern with, you know, taxpayer citizen property we're giving to somebody that probably no citizen would get any benefit from it, maybe, other than taxes, if there's taxes involved. There's nothing we can do to help Habitat, Habitat Humanity, or any other person to kind of, if nothing else, prioritize our, our local people, you know?
Allow me to look into that and see if that is something that we can do. Commissioner Paul and I have spoken at length over, seems, a year, as to how constrained we are with regard to affordable housing programs, and, and the board knows very well the use of our assets to ensure that we're addressing one of the powers that we have, but, but let me see if we can take a look at that.
Generally thinking, I think April's right, I don't, I don't think anybody, any one is different, I mean, all of them is kind of...
It's a slippery slope.
I'm, I'm not going to, I'm going to, I'm going to restrain myself from going with my gut, and I will get you an answer. Before we move on, just, just as we think about where this goes forward, so we've had one of the finalists present, we'll have two more present.
If they want to.
If, invite them to present. There is a, there was an RFP. The, the RFP process is one normally, just generally how a request for proposal would work, is that the applicants submit, their applications are considered, evaluated, a recommendation is brought forward, and the board makes its first choice. From there, the staff attempts to negotiate an agreeable contract to the town. If a contract cannot be reached, typically you go to the second best proposal. That's still available to the board here. It may be that that's where everyone thought things were in March, that an attempt was going to be made to negotiate a contract that increased the density and offered a greater amount of fifty to sixty percent AMI. Whatever action we take in the future, my recommendation would be, we make very clear that this is the RFP process, and we've now made a decision, go get a contract.
So can I ask a question? Those two things that we said, the fifty percent AMI and increasing the density, what did Habitat say about that? Michael? And if they did that, do we, can we still bring somebody else in if they... And if they did that, do we, can we still bring somebody else in if they did what we asked them to do? Did they?
I'm trying to remember. We can ask that question of them.
Okay. I'm sorry, I put you on the spot, Mike.
Yeah, I think it was-
We didn't get that far with the density aspect, but I do believe to the AMI, they did, they were agreeable to that, but we'll follow up on that as well. And I just wanted to add also, so, we did specifically ask them and own in on the marketing to Roseville residents, so while they couldn't guarantee, because anyone could apply, that they would strategically go out to our nonprofit partners, they would work with all of the various organizations to make sure that we market to any and everyone within the town of Roseville that this was an option for them to apply. And I think the other attractive piece around Habitat for our residents is the pathway to not just attaining to home, but sustaining the home once they have it, so the financial literacy, what they call sweat equity, and then the investment that they make in the families to actually make sure that this is sustained opportunity over time. So, we asked them targeted questions around that. They also answered that as well in their presentation. So I know you asked Commissioner Long about, also Mayor, about how we market to our citizens, our residents, and so they did make a concerted effort to say that they would go to any and everywhere within the town.
Yeah, I think, I think if, you know, I know Habitat Humanity, pretty, pretty, pretty good, not great, but pretty good. And, you know, I think they said that night, they have a pretty long list, and have people been waiting for several years, two or three years to, so they got their own list and a long list and all. Maybe marketing would get somebody, but you'd have to move them to front of the list somehow. I don't know how you would do that.
Unless somebody from Roseville's at the top of, in the top, person in that list.
We would be lucky, wouldn't we? That'd be great. If we knew that, that would, that would change the whole perspective a little bit, but we don't know that. Well, maybe we could get them to share the list with us or something.
That's probably not gonna happen.
But, come up, Mike.
Question, if we, if we hear from the three and nobody can kind of guarantee Roseville residents will live there, do we go back to the drawing board or just think about that as well, if that's kind of what we thought we were going to get?
Yeah, I don't know if you could do that if you're, if you're a nonprofit, I don't know if you, it has to be equal opportunities. I think you're getting restricted, I don't know if you're even restricted to age-related.
That's right.
I think that's-
You cannot restrict it to age-related except to the extent it qualifies under federal and state laws relating to 55-plus.
Okay. We don't want to take anymore, we're taking enough steps backwards now. We need to continue with forward progress. So I guess the next question would be, when, you know, how long does it take to get an answer back from, can we put a targeted date? Can we go ahead and target a date so we're not spinning our cycles?
We can invite them tomorrow morning and just see what, you know, put some dates out there, but it would be the next board meeting, so whenever that board meeting is scheduled, we're just planning on having them at the August and then Mizzou.
You know, Commissioner Long's suggestion to move quickly, I don't think it's anything on the agenda for the August work session, so we talked about canceling that, but, you know, in the sake of keeping this thing moving, I would suggest that we, we shoot for, if they can't make the August meeting, that's invitation. What do you say, invite? Use the word invite? Well, that's invite, maybe invite to the next work session. And I don't know the date on that, do you?
Date, August 19th.
19th.
Next work session.
Now, to keep it moving, Lynn, would be, would be a deadline date on it?
Yes, sir, agreed.
Yeah. Stephen, did you get out everything you wanted to say? I know you wanted to say something.
No, that was it.
Okay. All right.
The only other question I had is just, just for our own clarification, do we have any responsibilities to go back to the steering committee? Because again, they did invest time just to let them know where we're at in the process in terms of, although they made a formal recommendation for Habitat, do we need to let them know that we will be bringing the other two finalists in front of the board?
Yes, sir.
And that a decision will ultimately be made that could be someone other than their formal recommendation? Is that something that Michael and I, or Michael needs to follow up with formally?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think so. I recommend you letting them know, and also, you can invite them, they can't, you know, they won't be part of it, but they can come listen.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
Sure, thank you. We'll wrap it up, Eric. Anything else you want to add on this one, and then we move on to the next topic?
No, I think the direction is clear.
All right, we'll move on.
Yes, so-
Kicking off the memorandum topic?
Yep, I'll kick off that as well. So you all have been provided a draft of the chamber memorandum of understanding, and we've also had a presentation from Michael with the chamber present with their desires and what they want to see as far as funding and support from us for, over the next year. And us as staff are working to, kind of, for lack of better words, land their plane on the memorandum of understanding and the support that we'll be providing the chamber this upcoming year. I wanted to just kind of open the floor for conversation and say, what, what are the things that you all like to see or information that you need from us so that we can get that information to you in order for us to continue moving that forward as well? We've been able to solidify the memorandum of understanding with the RDDA, and as, and as you know, we've transitioned over into the next, the new fiscal year, and we just want to be intentional about our support, knowing that they are continuing to operate. We do know that they are seeking out new staff members and will be hiring new staff members, and that they've also clarified things around the programming efforts for economic development and business development and support. And they've also are continuing to, to keep moving forward with the different events they had on their calendar, Parks and Recreation, Police Department, and Fire Department, I believe met with the coordinator that they've hired to manage barbecue and bans as well. And so, their work continues, and despite not having an MOU, and so, we just wanted to make sure that we kind of keep the conversation going so that we can solidify that with you all. And so, I guess we are, staff are looking to you all to say, what information do you need from us? Need us to work with the chamber to get to you all? Or what feedback do you all have so that we can have, make sure, that we can solidify the MOU and be set up for success when it comes to our partnership with them this upcoming year?
So I think my biggest thing is the nonprofit status. If that's not fixed or in place, that's a non-starter. Like, I don't, I'm not worried about anything else other past that if that's not in place.
That should be a top priority for them, and it's been, it's been languishing for at least a year and a half that I know of.
100% agree.
And for me, is how can we, as a town, ensure accountability and transparency regarding the in-kind amount that we give into the chamber?
I'm agreeing with Dan on that one, and also with Paul Vilga. Michael, if you know the answer, or Stephen, maybe you know the answer. I was told that the chamber still has a nonprofit status. The only thing that they have lost is their tax-exempt status in order to be able to purchase things without paying taxes. Is that correct? Your understanding?
Yeah, that's how I understand it, too.
We can get that in writing.
I think it's a bigger issue than just that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to someone who oversees a number of chambers, and he had conversations with Philip and expressed his concern over this because it's a big deal. I'm not, I don't deal in that part of it, but I think it's bigger than just having an issue and paying sales tax.
We can engage with them about it. We can engage with them on the topic.
Yes.
I think the latest I heard is they were applying and trying to remedy it, but hadn't heard back from the IRS, and I don't know where that sits right now, but yeah, we can find out.
On that, on that point, the last conversation I had with Philip is he told me that it was rejected by the IRS, and it was sitting on his desk. And I think they need to hire a CPA who knows this and get a fixed stat, because it should be. It shouldn't be an issue that's been going on this long.
And I, I mean, I want to be a willing partner with them. I just want to make sure, this is taxpayer money, like, it needs to be done the right way, so I want to make sure it's all clean and clear.
Totally agree with you, Commissioner Vilga.
So I think sooner than later, we need clarification on what the deal is.
Yeah, because we definitely got to make sure that we are in accordance with the general statute 55 Alpha dash 1-6 dash 2-4 when using our funds towards them. Love regulations.
Okay.
Was that bad?
I did. More discussion? Eric, what other questions do you have? I think, I think what, generally speaking, is, and I don't, I don't know, I don't know enough about the 401Cs to-
Yeah.
-to answer that question. I guess you can be a 401C organization and don't have tax-exempt status if you don't file for that or something.
Right.
I don't, is that correct?
Yes. So, they are a nonprofit corporation in North Carolina. That, that status is not, is not at issue, as far as I'm aware. The, the question is, what sort of a 501C entity are they? And I don't know anything about their history. I do know that chambers of commerce are typically 501C sixes rather than threes, which is the charitable entity that we normally interface with.
So, everybody could be right, April could be right-
Correct.
...her assessment there, Paul could be right about his assessment.
So long as the funds are being used for a purpose that the town is authorized to expend taxpayer money on, the town is not at risk of having done something improper or illegal based upon their IRS tax status. That's a policy decision rather than a legal requirement on our side.
And I think Paul, maybe, you know, we do have somewhat a similar, a policy says it's got to be 401C, right? For our, our community projects and stuff like that.
Yeah, we do, but it's, it's separate from, yeah, yeah.
But I was saying, it's sort of a general policy we have, is, you know, we don't fund except 401C nonprofits.
And for the purposes of work session, that has actually come up as a conversation that has been brought to my attention, whether, going forward, next fiscal year, whether RDDA and the Chamber of Commerce are, should be considered under the community funding structure.
Right.
Breaking those two out, it's hard to see exactly why they are treated differently than the other community entities.
And if you do that, then they must be 401C.
And they fall under the policy, you have a larger pot of money to-
Right.
-look at how you want to address the needs of the community.
Right.
That's right.
So I think everybody can be right, what they're saying here. We just need to figure out, you know, if that's, if that's the true case, where they stand in. Yeah, come up, Stephen, recognize you.
Just one quick update for your awareness on the barbecue ban. So I did attend a meeting with the vendor that's leading that event, so it's my first time participating in it, but from a planning perspective, they mentioned that there will be over 5,000 people that they're looking to have participate this year as well, so, and just confirming, Eric, in terms of what we gave from a budget amount, that would, what we gave them for money would not be enough to host an event of that size, so they'll be soliciting partners, partnerships and sponsorships from there, but there's significant costs attached for an event that size as well. So, to my knowledge, the board is planning that event, you know, continue to do that without an executive director, but it is a large-scale event, so we did have police and fire attend that meeting to see what the cost in, in terms of making sure that the event was safe and secure. So it's a to-be-continued thing, but just wanted to make you aware that they're looking to scale that event to size.
Yeah, and I have a meeting with them, the same, I wasn't available last week for that meeting, so I have a meeting with them tomorrow during lunchtime to get more clarity on that. As far as we are concerned, our, our only direct investment into barbecue and bans is via a high-level sponsorship from our economic development funding, and that's, I think it's $3,000, right? And so, everything else, when it comes to the cost and expenses of that, I think that they will be doing that by way of vendors paying to van, food trucks paying to come out and, and be a part. And so, I don't think that the financial obligation for us will be something that will be in excess, and I do think that they'll be compensating by, by whatever, however they're, I'll know more tomorrow, but that, the person that is over that has helped with, like, Art of Cool Festival and all those different things, and so, I'm not fully aware of the, of the amount of sponsorships they have to help support. And so, that's something we'll gain clarity on, but I just want to state that the only money that we are, we've, and that was included in the MOU and just our intentions toward them was to be, I don't know the language, platinum sponsor of $3,000, a title sponsor, and, and just in kind of, as far as, when they change, I believe they're changing their location to the base, the same place they had 4th of July, and just won't be charging them for the rental of the field. And so, that's how we support, we'll be supporting them.
So our officers, I know our officers take part in the parade. Are they needing officers for this event as well? I don't think we ever have, they ever have in the past, I don't know.
I think they will. They did have some presence last year, but it was much smaller.
They did.
But I think they're looking to market it to a broader audience, because there's actually the timeline, the runway was very short last year when they started marketing for it as well.
Where is the event going to be at?
Redford Place Park.
Yeah, it says-
Will it close the street off?
I don't think so. I think it's going to all be inside of the field, the stage will be in the field, and the food trucks will be on the field, and so they were having meetings with Public Works and Park, they'll be having meetings with Public Works and Parks Recreation to make sure that there's no damage to the fields, but that's something that, if it's not super wet outside, then it shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, you was on-
So it'll be contained, it will be in a contained environment technically with gates going in and out.
You was on say, Lynn?
It just says, make available at current off-duty rate for off-duty police officers throughout nine hours for annual barbecue event, so it's in there, yeah.
Okay. Were you going to say something, Lynn?
No, sir.
No? I guess, I guess, to round this up, you started off by saying, basically, we need to make a decision on this, kind of, so we can wrap this thing up.
Yeah, we need to move forward. Yeah, the main thing is that we want to bring, BME providing you all a write-up and email with your questions answered, so that you can have as much information as you need as we approach the next meeting. Our goal internally as staff is to have this on the consent agenda for the next meeting, and so between now and then, if we need to have one-on-one meetings with you, break it up, break it up in the two of you, and meet with ourselves, with the, with the chamber, what have you, to get your level, level of comfort or just information, just get you everything you need to be able to have it on the consent agenda or to have it as an agenda item in the next business meeting. That's our goal internally as staff.
As a consideration.
Yes.
Okay, so-
And so, we just want, we're trying to figure out as much, what information we can get you between now and the next meeting, and we'll make a decision from a staff perspective as if it will be slotted on consent or will be slotted as a, as old business to talk through, but our goal is for us to have a conversation at the net upcoming board meeting, business meeting on, on this.
So, so I think what I'm hearing, Board, is he's asking to have it on the agenda for August meeting-
Yes.
-for consideration, an up or down vote, and everybody get the information and make your decision by then. Everybody okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
So, I would say, don't put it on consent agenda, put it as agenda item, consideration of the MOV, MOU.
Yes.
Yeah, MOU, and we'll discuss if any discussion and vote on it that night.
Okay.
If everybody's okay. Sounds like everybody's okay with that, so, good. What else?
That's all we have as far as open, open conversation.
One, one thing, I think I may be putting a clerk on the spot here. We talked about the community events that we, we mentioned a while ago. You about wrapped that up, right? You about got all your, I think you've closed out the submitting for the community events and all?
Are you referring to community funding?
Yes, uh-huh.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I said events, but funding.
I just wanted to-
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, we have finished receiving all the applications for the community group funding, and I will be sending an email to all of you with the applications for you to read through and decide to move forward with that, so.
And I think we have four?
We have five.
We have five.
We have five to choose from this year.
So, when do we want to make a decision on that? Do you know? You got a timeline?
I have my timeline, I don't-
And we need, do we need a committee to look at it first?
You had discussed at one point you wanted that.
We have, we've always in the past, but I think, Paul, you got a conflict this year, is that right?
I don't know. I don't do the, I don't do-
I don't know who the applicants, I don't know who the applicants are, so...
I think one of them, one of them's your wife, I think.
But it shouldn't be.
No? Was that, was that bad information?
That was not the right, that was for sure, Paul.
Okay, all right. So Paul, you are the...
Wrong Paul.
Yeah, wrong Paul.
Oh, okay. So, well, I had the understanding that, because he was the chairman last year, he's been the chair of this group all along, so that was my misunderstanding.
No, it's fine.
I had the understanding the chair was the conflict, so that's not the case then.
That's correct.
Okay, so my, so Paul, who worked with you last year on it?
April usually works on it.
All right, see, all two do it again.
Okay.
Who was the two?
Paul and April.
Okay.
Yeah.
You said there are four or five? Five?
Five of them.
Yeah, it worked out then. Yeah, I had to, I don't know why, I had the understanding the chair was conflict, but that's good. Thank you. Any other business we need to do, Eric or Dave, before we go into closed session? Stephen? We got a little time? No? How about the board? Anything the board want to bring up before we go into closed session? I do want to commend the, all the workers that worked with the Fourth of July, that turned out really well. Good attendance. I don't know if I heard a number or not. I heard a number, but I'm not sure if that's been verified or not. And I did hear, and I guess, Cap, you can verify this, there was no real incidents at either.
No, sir, nothing of any consequence.
Yeah, so that's, that's amazing. So I think I saw all of the police department employees.
Yes, sir, all of us, except the police staff and police force officers, building officers that help us out.
Yeah.
The chair for that.
And I imagine all the June's people there, it looks like they were working, so I think both, both of those groups.
Yes, they were.
And I believe the, I believe the Public Works people, I saw most of them there.
Yes.
So there's a lot of staff there, and I just want to commend the staff, me and you, Eric, commend the staff and everybody that worked the Fourth of July holiday there. It turned out to be really great. It was a great day. It wasn't, it wasn't the hottest Fourth of July event we've had, so the weather was great, too, so just want to commend you and the staff and everybody for that. Any comments from the board that went, want to comment, go ahead. But y'all did a great job. And I don't really have anything else. I will entertain a motion for closed session.
Okay, I move that the board go into closed session to discuss a confidential personnel matter pursuant to Chapter 143, Section 318, Dot 11A3 of the North Carolina General Statutes.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, we got a motion, second. Any other question, discussion? If not, we'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, so thank you, appreciate that, board. All right, we're in closed session.